Good evening and welcome to the Village Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting. Today is Monday, January 25th. It is now 7:00 PM. If I may ask you all to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we usually do, let us remain standing and think about our troops serving our country. And in particular, one of our employees here, private first-class Michael Stewart, has been brought down to Washington with the Army National Guard to serve and protect our nation. Thank you, Michael. Okay, thank you. You may have a seat. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, next regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees will be held on Monday, February 1st at 7:00 PM. And next workshop, yes.
You may wish to take a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, roll call, the, um, roll call here. Trustee Corrigan.
President.
Trustee Albert. Trustee Saberman.
Here.
Trustee Barone. I also have the village clerk, Ms. Amy Paffenroth, and Mr. Rob Magrino is also online, village attorney. Thank you for that, Mr. Janito. Okay, back to the schedule and the following regular Village Board meeting will be March 1st at 7:00 PM. Do we have any conflicts with any of those meeting dates with the board?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Um, quick update from the fire department chief Koffer, is he on? Jeremy?
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Great, thank you.
Um, I honestly have nothing to report this month. Everything's been quiet. Uh, we haven't been really doing drills on Monday nights because of the, uh, the uptick in all the COVID cases, so everybody's been staying home and.
Okay. All right, sounds good. I understand that you had an assist over there in Tolman this morning?
Yes, we responded to a fire in Armont this morning.
An air.
We were there for about an hour. And that's about it.
All right, great. Keep up the great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from Ariel Offgang, the principal of Offgang Architects. Um, the application is a request for a zone change and a presentation for a mixed-use residential commercial building on the empty lot at 50 Lafayette Avenue. Do we have Mr. Offgang?
Present.
Okay, Lord. Now.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I hear someone else in the background also, but that's okay. Um, yeah, so Mr. Offgang, if you would like to, um, present your plan to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Board of Trustees, for allowing us to present today. Uh, I am the owner of the lot, uh, that we know as 50 Lafayette Avenue. It's a point four acre parcel at the corner of Chestnut Lafayette, presently occupied by Java Love, formerly the Capital One Bank, and a vacant lot. In trying to decide what we're going to do with this parcel, we really have thought about a lot of different options. As of right, as you may know, we're permitted to build a four-story, forty-five-foot-tall commercial building, very similar to my building at 74 Lafayette. Uh, 74 Lafayette was really a passion project of mine. I bought the parcel, uh, after it was vacant for over fifty years. And I built, um, what is now, you know, for about a week after I built it, I worked in the Offgang Office Building, and then after Sushi Bada opened, now it does work upstairs from Sushi Bada. So everyone I know, you know, near and far knows Sushi Bada, so I do work upstairs from Sushi Bada. I share the building with Brian Brooker. We occupy, at this point, all of the office space in that building. In the lower levels, we have Sushi Bada, Postnet, which is a national chain franchise, shipping and printing. We have Gina's Hair Salon, and we have, um, a lawyer's office. The rest of the building is occupied by me and Brian. We occupy right now eighty percent of the whole structure. Java Love was a very successful project, in my view. We bought a bank, which I'm relatively convinced, or fairly convinced, that would have remained vacant for a while if, um, we didn't have the opportunity to buy it. Uh, I worked on that deal for a long time. I've told the mayor this story, but a friend of mine worked at Capital One, and we were having a poker night on the roof of my office building at 74 Lafayette. And he told me, "I'm closing that branch in two years." This is years, this is three years ago. And I said to him, "Randy, don't even put it for sale. I'm a Suffolk guy. I grew up in, in, in Ramapo. I live in Montebello. We're gonna buy that bank from you guys." And, um, he told me, "Well, we're a public company. I can't exactly do that, but I can give you the lady's name who runs, um, this disposition of property at Capital One." I proceeded to email her, and I'm not exaggerating, I'm a little bit obsessive. I emailed her monthly for a year and a half with no response. Until finally, one day, I get a call from a broker from Queens who says, "I have a note on my desk that says to call you about some building in Suffolk." And I knew him. He had actually leased up the first floor of a big building I designed in the Rockaways. And I said to him, "Barry, it's Ari." He said, "The architect?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "What do you want with a building in Suffolk?" He knew me as an architect in the city. And I said, "I want to buy the bank. I don't know what I'm gonna do, but it's a beautiful building. It's a key corner. And we're gonna do it." And I told him, "Barry, you don't even have to learn where Suffolk is. Let's work out this deal." So I worked with him for a long time. We bought the building. There was sort of a serendipitous, um, chain of events that happened on the sidewalk with the owners of Java Love that were actually looking at a different piece of property. And, uh, I ran into them, and then we, um, and then we did the deal. We negotiated the deal, and I think they've been very successful. I mean, they've certainly done great during COVID. It was a little bit scary at first, uh, but, but they're running a nice takeout business right now. Now they're doing delivery to cars. Uh, I'm myself there twice a day for my Americano with a splash of cream, so I think it's been an amenity for the whole neighborhood. So now, this is the next, this is the next step of all that stuff we've been trying to do. The next step really is, what do we do on the vacant parcel next door? So if I can now present my screen, I'll show you our idea. One second. Mr. Host, I think it's Mr. Janito. I'm being told that only one can share at a time, so it's not allowing me to share my screen.
Okay, one moment. Let me see if we can take care of that for you.
Thank you.
See if that works for you.
Here we go. Do you all see a survey?
Yes, it's up there.
Okay. All right, so, so this is, this is, this is the corner. Uh, if you could situate yourself a little bit north, there's the north hour pointing up towards the mountain. Uh, this is Java Love right here. The survey was actually done when it was still Cap One, so the lot configurations changed a little bit, uh, but it's still worthwhile to look at. So what we're proposing is, is keeping parking on the back approximately two-thirds of the parking lot and on top of the parking erecting a building, which you see here. The back of the building will be on stilts with parking below. The front would be, um, a retail store of around one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. And then this double door here is the entrance to a residential lobby. So why residences? I'm convinced, after twenty-two years working in urban development all over the city and regionally in Connecticut, New Jersey, upstate New York, um, and certainly in Rockland as well, that one of the most important things in the downtown is people, right? You have to have people walking around. You have to have people, uh, patronizing the stores and the restaurants. So housing, in my opinion, comes first in a redevelopment plan. Uh, we certainly had a lot of movement lately with the Sheldon. Uh, it's a success with, um, Washington Avenue and other building up by Gitlow, so we're starting to see a little bit of momentum. This building is a little bit different in that it is central to downtown, but what we're proposing right now is, um, on our parcel, we're proposing a six-story building, uh, with approximately eighteen apartments. Right now, it's designed as eighteen apartments, so I can walk you through what that looks like. The ground floor of the building, now we're zoomed in a little bit more. So Java Love is over on this side. You don't see it in this render. A gracious residential lobby with a package room, mailroom, one thousand two hundred and fifty-five square foot retail store that holds this corner. We're maintaining the garden that's adjacent to the shopping mall next door, the strip mall. So we're maintaining that garden, and we're providing a setback. Going up to the second floor, on the second floor, we're proposing two apartments, a one-bedroom with a home office and a balcony, and a large two-bedroom apartment also with a balcony. On the front of the hallway, we have, we're calling it our library art room. That's an amenity room. The truth is, we're not gonna program that until much further down the road, when we know what it, who, who the marketing's really pointing towards. If it's a younger population, older population, we'll decide if it becomes a music room and a party room, a ping-pong table, whatever it is. But we do have a room overlooking Lafayette Avenue, and then these are two voids that allow the lobby to be two stories high and allow part of the retail store to be two stories high. And this is the typical floor, third through six, two one-bedrooms on the front, each with a nice home office, and two two-bedrooms on the back. Every apartment has a balcony. Every apartment has in-unit washer dryer, which is very important. There is a refuse chute for trash control and recycling, uh, an elevator, of course. We're planning a roof deck, a roof amenity space. Um, and also, we have some other features that are, go, uh, more on the design, so I can go to our concept design. This would be a front elevation. The elevation, I mean, you'll notice, is probably, if my seventy-four Lafayette building had a residential sister, this is what it would look like. It's very similar. We always design with brick, big windows. We want a lot of light in these spaces. The bulkheads are tall because of the access to the roof for ADA compliance. The entire building would be ADA compliant, uh, complying with all current codes. The back of the building, you could see here, being that it's on stilts, the cars be parked underneath. And then we do have a concept of what it might look like materially speaking. So this would be the view here over Java Love. So if you're coming down from the hospital towards the train station, this would be the view entering downtown from that direction, and this would be the Lafayette Avenue-facing side. And this is, this is another view on Lafayette. There was a concept where we thought about pushing the retail back to have a bit of an arcade. I'm not sure if we're gonna do that or not, uh, but that was just one of our concepts I wanted to show. And here you could see the balconies on the corners. We also are gonna be providing, um, uplighting, similar to my building on Lafayette. I spoke with the, with the village planner a couple of years ago about how I think that the lighting at the top of my building on Lafayette has proven very easy to maintain. Some people were concerned to be hard to maintain. It's not LED light bulbs last years and years and years. Um, we actually had one light bulb die in the past four years since we opened, and it happens to be the one at the parking lot level next to the door. So I just reached in and changed the light bulb. So we're very lucky in that sense. It could have been one fifty feet in the air, but it wasn't. So they're gonna last a long time. Uh, I think they're very attractive. A lot of people have commented. You can see them from the thruway. So really, we think that uplighting on any new structures and maybe even some old ones in the village makes a lot of sense, and that can start to become a signature for Suffolk. And really, what we would need for this, this is obviously not an as-of-right project. Uh, the downtown, the, the, the CB zone that we're in now does permit forty-five-foot-high four-story buildings, but does not permit residential. So what we, what we are asking for is essentially a mapping of the TDD zone that the Sheldon has. That provides for actually more height than we're, than we have here. It provides for six stories, but seventy-five feet, which we don't need necessarily, uh, with a couple of variations. Um, the variations really from the TDD zone are just in light of the fact that we're in a smaller, on a smaller lot in the downtown instead of off to one side of the downtown near the train station. So the releases we would need, or the change in the, in the law that we would need, would be to keep the minimum lot size at the size it is in the Central Business District, which is actually zero square feet. There's no minimum lot size for commercial development in the, in the Business District. And then parking, well, we could satisfy the one and a half cars per apartment that's required in the TDD zone, like the Sheldon. The number of cars required onsite, in the case of the TDD, as it's written now, is one point two five onsite. We couldn't provide that. The lot's just too small. I don't think you'll ever have a lot downtown that could provide that. So we're asking to provide point five onsite and one offsite. So we essentially, if we do end up with eighteen apartments, we essentially would be provided, we actually could fit about ten cars for the apartment building, keeping the eight, the, this, we have eight for Java, ten for the apartment building. Um, so we could provide ten onsite, and then we would need to buy the balance, seventeen, whatever it is. We'd have to buy the balance, uh, from the village on one of the lots, about seventeen spots. So that's my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, very good. Um, great presentation. I love the idea. Um, I really wanna express my, my thoughts about it on the, on who it's coming from. It's coming from Ari Offgang and the architects that are known throughout, as he said, the regions around New York City, and has a proven track record here in Rockland County, right here in the village of Suffolk, with seventy, um, is it seventy-eight? I'm sorry.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four, seventy-four, and bringing in that retail component or the restaurant component, Sushi Bada and Postnet is just another driver to economic development here in the village of Suffolk, which we already noticed. And also, as, um, Mr. Offgang touched on, the, the benefits of the villages is currently receiving from the Sheldon, um, the walkability, and it's just the way the market is being driven by apartment-style living, as we can see, um, the Lafayette Avenue project, the Washington Avenue project, and now this proposed project. Uh, I think it's a, um, a nice building. It looks nice. Is the seventy-four Lafayette already looks nice, and you can see the demand for apartment-style living for the empty nesters that, that wanna downsize from, from their private homes to, um, young couples that maybe, or young professionals that may be working in, um, Good Samaritan Hospital. So if any of the board members would like to comment?
I've, 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 I have a couple of questions. Um, what would, what would be involved if, uh, if there was a subterranean level added for additional parking as opposed to purchasing spots? I'm just curious. Is that something that we'd wanna look at?
Trustee Albert, it really would just be significant cost for the excavation, uh, that the project couldn't bear with only eighteen apartments. Uh, cost is a consideration here. Material costs have gone up significantly, um, due to COVID and other pressures. So I mean, really, excavation for this, the cost of the foundation at twelve feet deep, which we would need to put cars in, would almost equal the cost of the, you know, the six stories above.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Very, very expensive for underpinning, plus there's, there's water issues. You've got soils that are not great. I, I want, not that I'm gonna build it on a slab. I almost wanna just do piles, build some storage rooms, small mechanical space, and that's it. Underground. I don't wanna try to get cars down there.
Sure. Now, what, uh, is, I presume this is intended as a rental building? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's a rental building. I'd wanna just build it and just keep it, uh, you know, manage it myself. I've even talked with the owners of the Sheldon, if it's possible, to have some sort of a cross-agreement where my tenants could pay a fee and use their gym.
Okay.
I discussed with them years ago, um, because this is a much smaller project. We don't have room for a big gym.
Right.
But, um, but, but I, yeah, it would just be a rental. I don't wanna keep.
As you envision it right now, is this something that's gonna be comparable to the Sheldon, or more luxurious, or less luxurious? Or, or, you know, like, where do you, where do you sort of position it rent-wise, you know?
I, actually, I, I think we'd be a little bit less expensive. My, my idea really is more in line with all of my experience building in Brooklyn and building in Queens and Staten Island, where we do smaller bedrooms, number of bedrooms counts, some smaller bedrooms. I'd say maybe trendier, trendier as far as interior design is, is concerned. So not as traditional. You don't need all the moldings and all that sort of stuff. Just cool. I, like, almost, from a branding perspective, I was thinking about naming it the Coffee House Lofts. Just sort of bare spaces, wood floors, cool wood cabinets, and maybe be able to keep the cost down a little bit.
Right.
By doing that, because I do think that the apartments, the Sheldon, are pricey, and a lot of people who live around here can't necessarily afford to rent, so this would be an alternative.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to answer my questions.
Thank you.
Ari, I have a couple of questions and comments. Um, first, I'd like to compliment you on the project you've already done in the village. The Java Love and Sushi Bada building are really beautiful properties and really add to the downtown atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, could you tell me what would the square footage be on the one bedrooms and the two bedrooms?
Sure. Um, do I have that here as a question? I could certainly tell you. Let me see. I'm sorry, Mr. Barone. I don't think I have the square footage here on this plan. I could send it to you.
Okay.
I can send it to you. I'm estimating approximately probably eight hundred and fifty for the two, and the one with the office probably seven fifty, but I'll measure it and send it to you.
All right. And can you discuss with me the feasibility of adding extra onsite parking going up in the back of the building so that people would drive onto the property and be able to park in maybe a second or third level above the ground?
Sure. The, and we've, we've looked at that, and that, that's something I've done in places like, like, um, Mount Vernon and Yonkers, where we have big slopes, but I could show you, the issue on this property would be firstly, the ramp would take up a lot of area. The ramp itself takes up a lot of square footage. Now, let's say, if we can get past that, the second floor, I just wouldn't wanna have these apartments facing a parking deck necessarily. Um, there may be a way to get a few cars, uh, but I, I'd wanna try to lay it out. The issue here is that we don't have a lot of grade change, so the first floor is only ten feet high. So if we were to go up to a second floor, it would block these windows in the back. Um, and also, from a site plan perspective, you know, a ramp might take up four or five spots just to get upstairs to pick up another four or five spots, so it might be a bit of a wash because the site's so constrained. I mean, I, I, I feel, to be honest, I, I know we don't need to get too much into what we think's gonna happen post-COVID, but I just think that there will be some parking available at the, at the, at the larger lots in the village that we could buy for people to keep cars there. Um, I don't really see everyone going back to commuting every single day to New York. So I'm hoping that there's, that releases the pressure a little bit on the parking lots by the station, and we could then, we would need seventeen spots from the village. We could then take them from there.
Just going, going to that point on, in regards to parking and COVID and the dynamics now in, in the professional world and commuting, um, the village has experienced a, a definite drop in parking and, and parking revenues due to COVID, and understanding that most likely the change in the workforce will be more so that working-from-home component with some commuting, so parking with, will, will be, um, available.
However, I have a, I have a different play on the parking. Uh, Charlie and I actually live in the downtown, and I have people that park right on top of my driveway because of Park Avenue that does not have sufficient parking, and that project was so many years ago, and it's probably not relevant, but we're left over with the effects of not having proper parking. No one parks in the lot that they're assigned to. No one does anything other than try to find the closest parking lot or parking spot closest to where they can walk in. And quite honestly, I would, I would do the same. I'm not judging anybody. However, parking is, is a concern, and Ari, just out of curiosity, um, eighteen apartments is a lot. You know, um, many park at Chase across the street from, and, and I guess they have an arrangement with Chase, um, that they park there prior to COVID, not allowed. But now they're allowed to, but I still have, I know Charlie, you have some too. Um, we have a lot of people that just, they work from home three days a week. They go into the office two days a week. So they park their cars right in front of our houses, right on top of our driveways for three days straight, regardless of what you have, may have during COVID. We don't exactly have company or anything like that, but you know, what is that gonna mean for the downtown? Are they gonna start parking and not moving cars? Is my concern, and my only other concern is eighteen apartments. That's a lot of people with a lot of cars. I love the project, so don't, don't misunderstand me. I, I think it's beautiful. I know your work. I respect you tremendously, but there are a couple of things that I have a little bit of concern on.
So going to the parking, some of the issues that you brought up, Joe, is that
I had.
Similar, similar, similar to the Sheldon, and what the Sheldon does also is that on their difference in parking is that they, they lease the spaces from the village and they're assigned spots in the lots. So that would be some type of similar arrangement that I believe.
They also park directly in front of it all the time, and the same cars are out there every day.
Well, yes, well, that's, that's a parking issue, and that, that has to be addressed by parking enforcement, but the logistics of the parking itself for the Sheldon, as they have onsite parking and offsite parking, as, as dictated in the TOD.
Okay, so Ari, do you see any way to sort of speak to the people that are gonna be renting from you? Do you think you can get commitments from them? I know that sounds a little silly, but, you know, parking in the village, even during COVID, for people that live here, is an issue.
I, I mean, one thing that I could do, I don't think I could ask people to not get cars. I mean, we could not provide spots.
No, I wouldn't ask that.
But, I mean, but one way, the truth is, the way that New York City does it, for better or worse, is they reduce parking requirements where they don't want people to have cars. So they say, like, south of Ninety-Sixth Street, it, there is no parking required for any use, ever, right? It's called Manhattan Core. So the, the thought process there is, it's impossible to park. Don't require any car, any parking spots, and then people just won't have cars. Now, you could, you could say some people probably still have cars anyway, and it causes a problem. Uh, but one way to mitigate the number of cars that people bring with them is if they come to rent an apartment, and I say, "We only have ten spots," instead of saying, "We have ten onsite and seventeen offsite," you'll filter out some people that don't drive, or that do drive, that have two cars. That's one way. The other thing I could do, which I've thought about, it's not my desire. I don't think it'd be great for the, for the street frontage, is just park on the entire first floor and eliminate the store. It could probably get a couple more spots, three or four more spots, by not having the store and just having, I'll have to move, flip the elevator around and sort of have cars coming all the way down to the front yard. I like the idea of the store. Even though there's a lot of vacancies in town, I found, both with sushi and also with Java, that if you give a nice space with a lot of work and decent ceilings, you can get good tenants that pay real rent as opposed to some of the older stuff in the village where the landlords aren't giving any incentives, they're not paying for tenant improvements, and the spaces are old. So I like the idea of having this little store. I think I can get someone good there.
And I, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all, uh, with what you just said. Um, you know, I just, uh, parking, no matter how we look at it in this village, is always very interesting, for sure. Um, so what about, so what about the apartment count?
I mean, the apartment count really, we, we're less, the density in the TDD permits sixty-five units per acre. Now granted, we don't have the forty thousand foot minimum, okay, but if we put that aside, and you just do the same ratio, the, a, a lot of point four acres would actually be permitted, I think it's twenty-six. So as far as density is concerned, we're, we're below where it would be if the lot was bigger. Like, if I was able to buy more property and get to forty thousand feet, and then you map TDD, we would have more than the increase if I just made the lot bigger. So that's kind of how we arrived at it. Also, smaller apartments, um, smaller apartments, I think, could get to the price point that's needed around here. I think that's sort of what we saw, even just in myself as an investor looking at stuff, like, if you go to Park Place, there, there are some apartments that are, they're, they're pretty old, and they're in disrepair. So if you, if you're sort of in between Park Place, wanting to get an older building, and wanting to be able to rent in the Sheldon, you're somewhere in the middle, there's no, there's no niche there. There's no sort of like, you know, like Williamsburg-style building where you have, or Bushwick, where you have like smaller units, less amenities, and get a good price point. Everything's either old or new and very high-end, and that's how we ended up with the number of units.
Okay.
You know, it, it, it makes sense, it makes sense to, to me. I think you're right. The parking's an issue. I'd like to know, you know, what actually happened, you know, at the end of COVID, if, if people do come back and get all those monthly spots again. Also, don't, we also have, there's eighteen spots on the property, okay? I keep saying ten. There's eighteen on the property. Eight belong to Java. Java closes at four o'clock, right? So I, I just don't wanna get into that conversation. I can't prove that there's gonna be a trade of spots, so I wouldn't even ask for it. But Java closes, they have very limited hours, so their eight spots, they don't have a right to those in their lease necessarily. They belong to the project, but if after they're closed, people who come home from work are here, and those spots, they know they have to be out by eight in the morning, I could do that too, if I needed to with those eight spots.
Okay, I see.
We could also analyze the parking overall for the overnight parking. I know that there is no overnight parking in the CB, but there is overnight parking throughout the village. So I mean, it's just.
I can show you from where I'm sitting, Mr. Mayor. You can see the parking lot's empty. I can show you from where I'm sitting, Mr. Mayor, you can see the parking lot's empty. That's the B lot back there.
Right, right.
A- and two, you know, the other concern is we have to make sure that, you know, and this is of course down the down the road, um, you know, bad weather, like, you know, we're going to get one to three inches. Everybody's in a panic, you know. This, you know, we're in a panic because it's one to three inches. I mean, DPW and the street department, I know they are ready. The roads were beautiful today. But if it turns out to be six to eight inches, because you know, the weathermen don't always get it a hundred percent correct. You know, we kind of have to have a, a way to move those cars so that we can have a spot for them to go, because we don't want another Lonigan Drive on our hands either with those eighteen to twenty cars. You know, it just
You mean, you mean if residents of this building are parking on the street and the streets have to be
Correct. Correct. And then it also, and if they park on the street, they also take away from other businesses that, you know. You know, we're all in, you know, we're all a little spoiled in this village, like me, like have to go to the pharmacy. Oh man, I gotta park four, four parking spots away. I should have just walked, you know? But um, you know, so
You end up right back at your house.
Yeah, it actually is so much easier for me just to walk from my house than it is to actually park in the village by shore and healthier as well. Um, but those are just some of the things I'm thinking of. Um, you know, I, I do think that you've done amazing work and I don't mean to sound as though I'm not interested or open-minded by any means, but those are just some of my questions.
Thank you.
And thank you for answering them.
And once again, I think just taking a look at the Sheldon and just to the seeing how the Sheldon and the offsite parking was arrived at um, the requirements and, and it's actually working out fine. That's, you know, and in regards to snow plowing and all. That is a concern and you know, that's the responsibility of the, of, of the person who owns the vehicle, who parks it on the street when the snow snow restrictions are in place. So that would pertain to, to everyone, but understood. Also with the lots being directly across the street, it's um, it's pretty desirable to go right into the lot.
Thank you.
The B lots, yeah, the B lots right across the street, right here.
Right.
Ari, can I ask you a question?
Sure, of course.
Can you uh, vet this thought process out? What if you were to team up with the building across the street, the old HSBC bank building? And do something similar at the same time and then find a place for a big municipal parking garage?
I mean, I've looked at, there, there was a time when you guys were thinking of building a municipal parking garage on the B lot, right?
Yes.
And we looked at it and the prob, the problem with financing that structure was just that the monthly rents are so low on parking. You can't borrow the money to build it. It's impossible. It's, it's, it's very difficult to actually build something else, to go and build another structure. Where here, we could build it because the incomes upstairs. If you pick a piece of property, buy the property, build the garage and then you're still only getting, I think uh, my staff went crazy when it went from fifty to seventy bucks a year for, and we, and I said, don't call them. Seventy bucks a year, don't say anything. And they were about to complain. They were going to call Ed directly. I said, don't call him, leave him alone. Um, it's just at seventy bucks a year per month, monthly spot, you can't afford to build a garage. It's tough. It's almost like that's why you need the government to do it, right? Mr. Brown, like it's like, that's why governments do that stuff, because you can't, there's no, there's no commercial way of building a parking garage when you get seventy bucks a year for a spot.
Even when it's incorporated in and would be adjacent and part of the whole development project?
I mean, I don't know how many apartments we would get if, if he decided to tear down the HSBC, but that lot has zero parking. Right? HSBC, that road behind it is actually a public road. So he has no open space at all. That's built lot line to lot line.
Yep.
Um, it would, it would just, my only answer would be, it, it would depend on how many units you get total, right? If it became really a big job, if we're talking a hundred units, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty units, maybe you could start to figure out how to build a garage. But if we're talking eighteen plus twenty over there. You just can't do it. It's, if you think about the rent here. I don't know what it might be. I'd say the average is at twenty-two hundred bucks a month. Right? There's eighteen apartments. You guys can do the math. That's the income. How do you then pay for the mortgage on another piece with a parking garage on it? When the income here isn't changing, just because, you know, just because you're adding spots somewhere else. It's tough. I mean, wasn't there a plan, Mr. Mayor, to do something behind the theater? I thought there was a, there was a plan at one point to build a parking garage behind the theater for the village.
I'm not sure about that. They may have spoke about it, but I don't think there was ever a plan. But I think going back to the development of the village overall and what we have seen in the last couple of years and what is attracting developers and architects to come in and, and take a look at the village of Suffering is the availability of the space. Um, and the location to the train stations, which we all know about going through the TDD zone and, and building of the Sheldon, and now we attracted another um, Lafayette Avenue project and Washington Avenue project. This is where it's heading. This is the direction that people are looking to go. Um, the inventory for apartments are, are scarce. They're hard to come by, especially in, in, in the new, in the newer models. So it's something to really look at, understanding that the parking um, requirements that would, would have to be looked at. Um, you have a proven track record. You brought wealth to this village just by your new building. Uh, sushi bata, Java love, um, and your development throughout the region. It's, it's something um, that we should closely look at.
Agree.
Yeah, I have a question, uh, this is
We're asking Ari the questions, so.
Yeah, my question to Ari is, where exactly is the off, the offsite parking? Is it, is it, is it in that lot opposite the post office? I think that's the B lot.
That, that would be the closest lot and we would request to have the seventeen spots there, yes.
Okay, seventeen spots there. And actually, those, the B lot is pretty empty at night, right?
It's totally empty. I could try again here. You could see it right out my back window.
Okay. And uh, when you talk about the um, coffee shop. Right now during this COVID period, it's uh, it ends at four PM. But during normal hours, the coffee shop usually is open till eleven PM. In normal times.
At late, but that's, that's why, Mr. Sorban, that's why I don't want to, I mean, we had talked about. I think that's just a possibility as a bonus for more spots. I would never rely on their spots for the residents. Uh, they have their eight, they have a site plan approval that requires eight cars. I'm not going to touch those. That's just something that it's a possibility that we could look at if there's no other solution. But I agree with you. They could also change their hours, right? I can't write into their lease that they have to close at four. So they could decide to be open twenty-four hours and apply for a liquor license for all I know. So, so I don't, I would never count on their spots.
Yeah.
Just a possibility.
I follow you.
Also, just to make the board aware that for the B lot, there is um, no overnight parking in that lot unless a permit is purchased. And I believe uh, there may be a dozen or so overnight parkers in the B lot. So there is substantial room, just for, for consideration.
All right. Nice to know. That's important.
But yeah, just to, just to, just to throw in there though, obviously if people uh, move into this proposed building and their parking spot that they're assigned is in the B lot. Um, you know, they may be, you know, maybe they're working from home and they just have a car so they can run errands and their car is going to be in the B lot during the day at that point, just to kind of make sure everyone understands. It's not just it's just because someone lives there, doesn't mean they're only going to use the lot at night. I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, no, you're, you're a hundred percent uh, correct, but at the same time, that pertains to anyone. And they still need to buy a permit.
Correct.
Yes. During the day.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So what would be the next step if, if we were able to pr, to proceed with this zone change?
Mr. Magrino?
Well, you would need to uh, make a petition to the board to change the zone. Um, you know, I know you, you referenced the TDD. Uh, what I would suggest maybe uh, is you and or your council give me a call and we can discuss, you know, um, how you want to go about it, but uh, it would be a formal petition to the board and you'd have to, you know, indicate what you want to change it to. If you want to change it to TDD. Just straight TDD, um, you could certainly apply for that, but as you mentioned, you would need variances. So that would, it would go to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, when the Sheldon came in, they're the ones that basically drafted the TDD zone. So obviously they drafted it to fit their, um, their particular project. Um, one thing I'll note that is going to come up a little later is some discussion regarding uh, a copy, an updated comprehensive plan uh, for the village. So um, you know, I don't know about your timing, but you know, something like this, um, you know, you're talking about this specific piece, but obviously uh, as part of a comprehensive plan, you look at the entire downtown. So the short answer to your question is, um, it would be a petition, but I would recommend that either you or your council give me a call and we can we can talk about it.
Or your council.
Well, yeah.
So, so there, there's no way to do, could you do a text change to just lower the lot and the onsite parking requirement for that zone? If everything else complies, we comply with everything else in that zone.
All right. Well, that's what I'm saying. If you want to, if, if, if you lay out exactly what you need, you know, you can can it be a text amendment? Possibly. It can be a, a change to the bulk requirements. There's any number of ways to go about it. It's, I mean, you have to kind of come to us and say, this is what I'm looking, you know, this is what I want to do. I want to change this text to you know, this bulk requirement to that, uh, keep it a TDD, you know, call it a TDD dash one, you know. That's where, you know, we have to discuss a little, in a little more detail. Um, exactly what you want to change it to.
But so, so just so I understand, but a- as we proceed, um, just the, the, the general uh, feeling in the room. So then if there, if, we're going to look at all different ways of, of adding more spots. But if we're not able to and we need the offsite spots. Is the board still relatively in favor of this project or is that going to be a deal killer?
I would say I'm looking favorably upon the project due to, you know, um, with your track record in place and what you have brought to the village. Um, and what we need here in the village is another driver for economic development. Uh, I'm speaking for myself, looking at the parking, I'm sure that there are ways that, you know, of, of course, you looking revisiting your parking on, on that piece and us looking at our parking requirements in the village.
You know, I, this village is a quaint little village. And this would be on the main street, the second big uh, asphalt. You know, a brick or whatever it is, building on Lafayette Avenue. And I, it sounds very nice, this project, but also I, I wonder about how we're changing the character of the quaint little village of Suffering as we build these five, six-story buildings.
We really need to look at, you know, moving forward here in the village of Suffering, we need to look at tax ratables. We need to look at um, revenue coming into the village via, um, through taxes, through water, through sewer. Those are things that we also need to look and we need to look forward. We need to be forward looking to see what the needs of the village are going to be in five and ten years. Where are we going to be? Are we going to be in the same village from, you know, twenty twenty? In twenty thirty? I think we need, we need to, we need to change and move forward, move with the times.
Well, Mr. Mayor, let me ask you, because I don't understand, this building would be a ratable for us?
Yes.
Oh, that's nice to hear.
Yes.
As well as helping the downtown.
Yes, draw, it's a driver for economic development.
Okay.
We had no breaks on taxes, it seems. I've tried.
Sorry.
Ratable for sure. It's a commer, a commercial endeavor. Retail store would pay taxes, permits, permit fees. Fully ratable market rate, residential development.
So the income would come from the stores, not from the apartments?
Well, both.
From both?
Yeah, the, 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 everyone would pay rent to the landlord, which would be me, but then also I would pay property tax. And the businesses would pay their taxes and their fees and their renewals every year.
Yeah.
Property tax, school tax, water, sewer, county.
I'm not asking, I'm not, and it's really just, Mr. Sorban, it's really just a matter of timing for me. I'm not asking, we're not asking for a pilot. We're not asking for any sort of agreement. I just want to, you know, if we can do this straight commercial endeavor, rent the apartments at whatever rate I, whatever the market could bear and go on with our lives. And I'm sensitive to the fact of, of, of bringing another brick building. I do think that Park Place is seven stories tall, right? It's actually one story more than we're asking for. It's right off of the downtown. And once, once a building is built, it just becomes part of the fabric. Where, and, and I think that my firm, this is what we've done forever, is we've built buildings that blend. Um, I actually learned this lesson pretty early on, but there was a previous iteration to my office building that was presented years and years ago to you guys, to the village. Um, some, some of us didn't even live here yet. I mean, I lived in, in Spring Valley at the time. Uh, but I was working for my former boss and he applied for, uh, he applied to build my office building and it was a white, literally a white stucco building with big, huge windows at sort of weird angles and everything. And we were at the village board meeting presenting, or the planning board meeting presenting the building and the planning board asked him. How does this fit into the character of our village? And, and he just, he didn't really know how to answer. I learned right then, that's not a way to bring a new building to a downtown. You have to learn, I mean, our building, I've had people come to my office at seventy-four Lafayette above Sushi Bada and they think it's a rehab. They think it's an old loft building that I renovated, because we worked so hard to kind of make it fit into the, to the town. And we're going to do the same thing over there. I'm not trying to build something that's hypermodern just to pat myself on the back and say, I did it. We're going to build something that's contextual, something that fits in. And sure, there's going to be some height and there's going to be some new people. But I just, I, I think that the mayor is right. That's something you have to do if you want to push the economic engine to make sure the village can stay viable for the businesses.
Yeah. I, I'm speaking for myself, I, you know, I, I, I think we do need residential development uh, in downtown. I think, I think it does drive business to the local retailer, you know, local restaurants and so forth in the area. I think that's a good thing. I am worried about parking because I know obviously this was before COVID. But uh, you know, about a year and a half ago, we were desperately looking to spend actually quite a lot of money uh, on a property, the village this is, in order to build a parking lot. So I, I know that there was a parking crunch. There isn't right now. But I am concerned about that, you know, things could change in the future when COVID is over. We don't know. There's, there's really no way to tell for sure, but I, I'm, that's the only concern I have is the parking. I think the project, as you're presenting it, you know, con, conceptually looks great. And I think it's a great uh, driving uh, business and so forth for the downtown area. I think that'll be, it's a slam dunk really. But I am a little concerned about the parking situation going forward, not right now, but going forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Offgang.
Thank you, everybody.
Patient, a great discussion by the board and um, look forward to speaking with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Thank you, Ari.
Thank you, Ari.
Okay, next up is the tree committee and an update from Sandy Stead. Is Miss Stead with us?
Yes, I see, I see her.
Yes, Sandy.
Uh, did I unmute myself?
Yes.
Last time I couldn't get it in, so I did it right. Okay, good evening, everyone, and um, hope everyone's staying safe and some of us have gotten our vaccinations, I guess. I was lucky, I got one of the leftovers from the hospital. Don't ask how, but I was just really lucky, so. Um, anyway, to continue, um, we have a very exciting tree committee, uh, very robust. We've got the appointees, myself, um, Charles the Whiskey. Deputy Mayor Charles Barone is on our committee and um, Sheila Foster, Katie Bulger, John Wicks and two volunteers, Patsy Wooters and Sarah Mondell. So, um, you know, we're really starting to get things done here, I think, um, the way we've wanted to for quite a while. So I want to first thank Amy. She put together a draft for us so that we can have posted on our uh, website, who the members are, what our mission is and what we're trying to achieve. And um, just want to do a little bit of um, information that we had a, a week meeting last, last week. Unfortunately, Charles Barone, I know you had some problem with the vaccination. Charles the Whiskey couldn't make it. But um, for the most part, what we talked about, I had done some research regarding the entire audit. Um, tree mitigation and survey for all of our trees. And over Christmas, I got this um, holiday greeting from Davy Resource Group. And over Christmas, I got this holiday greeting from Davie Resource Group. And they just assist villages with, you know, some of their problems and the options they have. So I reached out to a wonderful fellow, Andrew Allman. And we talked about the fact that there are no grants this year, probably will not be grants until the 2020, at least July, if not the end of the year. So we got talking about a budget that we have and what we were doing with our budget. Long and short of it is, he offered to do kind of a ballpark number of what it might cost us to just do an entire village tree inventory. Risk mitigation report, so Charles, I had reached out to Charles the Whiskey, he wanted center line, a map of the center lines of the village, came up with, you know, approximately 3,000 trees, I don't think we have that many. And Charles, if Charles were here, but I know he's not tonight. But for 3,000 trees, it would only cost us approximately $1,300, between 13, $1,400. To do the complete inventory, what am I saying, 1300, 13,000, we have a $20,000 budget, right? That's according to Mike Janito, so it would cost us about $15,000, so. Brought it back to the committee and we're suggesting that instead of doing any phases like we did the first, you know, 89 trees along Washington Avenue, we do the full inventory, then we can plan sections. And this way, it's the greater health to our, to our trees. So I don't know if you have any questions about that, but you know, that's our suggestion to the board, we move forward with it. I don't think we have to do an actual bid, I think it's professional services to do that kind, and you, you know, you know better than I do, but we may be able to just, you know, reach out with a quote and do this fairly soon.
3,000 trees, the inventory, 3,000 trees, Sandy, would be $15,000?
Yeah, about 13,500, he said, yeah. Shrubs in the bushes, and the bushes, we'll include not only our street trees, but the trees in our parks. I, trees around, I explained to him around the pool area. You know, we have a lot of large trees there that need attention, in front of the firehouse.
So on the inventory, what would the inventory give us, just the, the number of trees, the species of trees, the age of the trees, what?
No, it's the same as we did for the 89 trees and I'll send you, well, we had that proposal from Bartlett. And it's an absolute, every tree is, is marked. And they do a full assessment of the tree from the health of the tree to the soil, of the full nine yards.
Okay.
They would, there were other companies that would do it, but we would get exactly what we'd gotten before, so. And then also, there would be a moving forward a maintenance program. And I know, you know. Charles Brown wanted to bring that up at our next, at our last meeting, but unfortunately, he couldn't be there, so we postponed it till our next meeting. But we really need to not only take care of them. You know, one time when we're pruning and trimming, but we need to have a full maintenance program.
So the inventory, the inventory and the maintenance of the inventory of trees will be separate also, so we would have to continue to monitor that inventory to maintain the trees?
Yes, and they offer, I know that this one company, Davie Resource, offers a a, you know, platform that you can subscribe to and then you can do it all online. You can take care of it that way, and I'm sure Bartlett offers that too, because when I had spoken to them, they wondered what we were doing, you know, this year, because they had maintained, they had fertilized, they had put some nutrients into the trees last year. So again, it's a full program with this Davie Resource, they offer one year free and then you subscribe to the, you know, computerized program.
Right, you have a cost, do you have a, an estimated cost on the program to maintain the inventory of the 3,000 trees?
Yeah, I think it was no more than $2,000 a year, so you did, it might be a little bit less, I, I, I should have had it that in front of me too, but first year free. And then there are other programs, you might not have to subscribe to that, theirs in particular, but. And again, I'm sure Bartlett and the rest of the companies out there save a tree, they all offer it. So it's a really great ongoing program, but you know, kind of leading into, I know you're bringing up master plan, which is pretty exciting, but you know, this, we would really have something with, you know, real bite to it as far as taking care of the trees.
Sandy, I have a question for you. This is trustee Salomon. Before this, before this whole thing. How were the trees in our village watched over? And how were they inventoried, how were they, how were they managed?
Well, you know, I can't go back too far, but we had a more robust program years ago and then, however, I guess it was people. Takes a lot of work, you know, so we have a very strong committee here. And, you know, the mayor, the trustees, everybody was really, you know, moved towards this in 2012. We actually became a Tree City USA and Fred Rela, Bruce Simon, John Wicks. I was kind of working a little bit too much to get involved in that, I know Sheila Foster, Charles the Whiskey. So they started that, so since 2012, we've moved forward, thanks to their efforts. And then about four years ago, we did the downtown area. The pear trees, the fruit trees, and they, they've looked, oh, they looked gorgeous this year. Because, you know, there's a lot of years that we didn't do too much with them. And then last year, we did the 89 trees, which I was shocked, 89 trees from Washington Avenue, the, the whole length of Washington Avenue and then the few side streets like East Maple, Mulberry. That's a lot of trees and it, it's a great job, one extended throughout the whole village.
So Sandy, before this idea of an inventory, there was no actual on paper and on a computer, an exact inventory of all of our trees and bushes in the village, is that right?
Um, no, years, years ago, there was a master plan that was done by Cornell Cooperative Extension and in fact, our memory tree program that Sheila Foster and I, you know, we, we both, that's, that's a a program that we started 2002. And we have planted, and the residents of the village have donated 29 trees. Either replacing, adopting a tree on Main Street. And then some wonderful stories, everything's on the website, so Mr. Salomon, you should really take a look at that link. Because it, it's really from heartwarming, a young 14 year old child died and she loved the Dunkin' Donuts, so her parents purchased the plaque, they adopted a tree there. Sam Iorio, who is a World War II veteran, 90 years old, his tree is planted right by the monument. So it, 29 trees and on the link on the website, it has who the tree was donated by or in memory of. Pitt Hoffman, the village hall, he was the principal. And the, the Women's Club and the Garden Club last year celebrated their 100th centennial and they planted a tree, one is planted at the library and the other one's down at Dave Clifford Park. So, you know, we, we've come a long way, but, you know, we want to continue this robust program. And I think we're really on the right track.
Yeah, it does sound good, it sounds like you want to get more organized and hire a company who might in an organized way maintain all the trees we have, right? That need it.
Yeah, that's what the idea is, you can, you really need to follow specialized arborists, tree maintenance, they're Bartlett is tree experts, they've got, they're from Westchester. And they do have quite a good history, Davie Resource Group is national. And they, they, you know, it just, you know. I encourage you to take a look at their websites and I'll send you information about them. But they really do have quite extensive programs. And you can't do, we can't do it ourselves, it's, you know, trees have become, we all know, climate change, storms. You know, you've got to protect your trees and be careful doing it the right way, because a tree falls down on a house or a person, you know, can be pretty deadly.
Well, that's what I do like about this company and the program.
So this is all to be presented, moving forward, this is where we are with the Tree Committee. I just want to say that, so that, that's the price. I know that we had been shared, I was shared our budget and it's what, 20,000, $959? So if 13,500 is going to cover the whole entire village. All of our, all of our public trees and the shrubs and bushes in the parks. Then we certainly could afford to do that and move forward with maybe.
Ms. Stead, that's the board. That sounds like a great idea, I think the board needs to digest all of that and maybe if you could follow up with us on the maintenance program, I think. What they offer, what the tree services offer and what this entire village inventory would do. I think that's a great idea, I think the board would look forward favorably on it with more information, is that, is that fair enough to say, board?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Sandy, and thank the entire Tree Committee for keeping up doing such a great job on our trees here in the village.
Thank you all, we really welcome it, you know, we're excited and Amy will have the, actually, I sent it tonight. So once that gets posted, you know, then we'll have a little really confirmed what our true art tree committee is, who the members are. And we also did have a guest last meeting, George Profess, he's the DEC, our regional director, so we're not pulling this out of the hat, you know, we're really looking towards really qualified information and direction.
Yeah, sounds good.
Thank you. Are you staying on the line? Are you staying for the meeting?
I am, yeah, I want to hear about. Water plant, tree plant.
All right, because we're going to, we're going to roll right into a discussion here in regards to the Village of Sufferings Plan for the development of parkland and recreational and open space in the Squires Gate community along with the Lake Antrim area. So with the anticipated transfer of land from the state of New York to the Village of Suffering in regards to the Lonigan area, Lonigan Drive area. I'm going to, Amy Patfron Roth has developed a plan to hopefully we can reinvigorate that space around Lonigan Drive with additional plantings emphasizing the parkland. You know, like parkland, bringing it back to nature. Trees, shrubs, everything that the Tree Committee looks upon favorably is something else that we're exploring, I shared some information with Sandy and I also spoke with, with Patsy Wooters, excuse me, I'm sorry, Patsy, and she had some great ideas also, trib, Trees for Tributaries, a program from New York State. You know, so we're looking to develop these, these programs, hopefully Sandy and the Tree Committee will be on board, I know Ms. Wooters is definitely on board. But we need to, once we receive a title to those properties down at Lonigan Drive, the board, you should have some input on to what your thoughts are, you know, how should we return that land back to nature? I think it's just something very beneficial for the Village of Suffering. You know, we need to seek out probably some grants, we want, we don't want it to cost the village anything. We want it through grants and volunteerism and ideas from, from our Tree Committee and, and our involved residents and the board. So I don't know if you have any questions in regards to that or comment from Sandy or Ms. Wooters, if, if you're on, it would be a great time to, to open that discussion. Anyone?
I just wanted to, you know, underline what you're saying, Mayor, Patsy has been phenomenal over the years researching the grants, the Trees for Tribes, that's excellent, along the whole waterfront of the Mawa River. We can get free treats, so we can start a program there. And also there's so much, with George Profess, our regional director, there are a lot of bushes, trees, plants, gardens, stuff that are free to us, so the fact that this committee is Sarah and Patsy, Katie, everyone is just, you know, we just want to see our trees thriving, so. That, we'll, we'll do the, we'll do the legwork, that's, that's what we want. People volunteer, they want to see this, so.
That sounds great, you know, I mean, even people from the community, they, they reached out even last year, possibly community gardens. Returning the land back to nature, much less maintenance and, and where on the village and the village employees. So it's something that we really need to take a, a good look at.
And just a little aside too, it says, I mean, I think it was nine and 10%, I just read that in one of the universities, it improved your real estate values by, you know, upwards of almost 11%, 10 to 11%. So we all know, when you go into it, I mean, I was in Birmingham, Alabama, like about two years ago, oh my gosh, it's just, it just feels so good, you know, and so it's not only the climate change, the water runoff, the wildlife habitat, it's a good feeling. We can breathe better, so. So thank you all, we're, we're in.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, Mayor, I have a question for you.
I have a question for Sandy, oh, sorry, go ahead, you first.
Okay, with this Lonigan Drive area, which is going to be developed maybe quite beautifully into a park, you know, a tree park and all that.
It's a park, it's a parkland, not necessarily a park, but parkland, park-like nature.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Okay.
Because I've been down there and seen it. I was just wondering, is there any, is there going to be any one person in charge of the, the whole Lonigan area or is it going to be Sandy or?
Oh, no, we'll all work together.
There's going to be, there, there will be teams, hopefully, you know, if the board so desires to move forward with this plan, we'll develop teams, we'll use the resources that we have with the expertise of Ms. Stead and Ms. Wooters and, and, you know, put together teams and see how we'll have team leaders and develop it that way, it'll be a, a, a broad plan.
Okay, the one thing I liked about what you said was, if we have team leaders or one special leader. We'll really know who will be most accountable and, and this, this, this organization, which it'll take organization. You know, we'll have a chief at its head, so we can know, you know, who to ask for responsibility and accountability.
Correct, similar to the Tree Committee, how that is structured, we'll have a structure in place before anything moves forward, that's, that's what we're going to have to develop first.
Yes, exactly.
Good, I agree, thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe Joe Hunt's trying to say something.
This guy's hand raised for sure, I, well. I, I had something to ask as well, but I'll let Joe Hunt go first.
Okay, John, can you unmute Joe, Mr. Janito?
Joe should be able to unmute himself.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Board and Sandy, just my input to the Memory Tree Committee. That if we're going to do planting down there, maybe we should do a memory brick pathway to help raise money and fund this project. You know, I've been around the shores and whatnot, I've been seeing some beautiful memory gardens with stones and walkways that people pay to put down, like the hospital, I have one of my first born up there in a memory walkway. This is a good way to help fund this, Mayor.
Yeah, no, these are, these are the ideas that we're looking for and these are, these are the reasons of forming the committees at no cost to the village to look for, for sponsorships or. at no cost to the village to look for, for sponsorships or fundraising and maybe possibly have the Suffering Community Foundation involved as the, the nonprofit organization to raise the funds. There's a lot of structure to go and, to go behind the scenes here and these are the, we're in the infancy stage here of developing the plan, the process and the protocol. So that's what we are looking at.
Okay, I just wanted everybody to keep in mind that the CSA member funds, we do help a lot here and we'll be willing to helping this to help fund some of the projects, like buy a couple trees in honor of the military, the fire department, the police department and the CSA members. We're here to help out in any way we can. And I'm saying the members, we take a lot of money out of our pockets to help fund some of the projects with recreation or in the village and, you know, the tax base, we, we try to help out. I just want to keep that going.
Great.
Everybody be aware of that. Thank you for your time.
That's great, Joe. And you know, that's a great idea because you know, you've been part of the Memory Tree Program. We are kind of running out of even of space. We've got so many trees planted in Avon Park. We have a lot of trees adopted. The Ben, Ben Sickel Hudson, you know, the, and Limerick family. They're planting lovely. This is going to be so exciting. It's a memory tree right by the corner of the Suffering Furniture. And apparently their parents were married at Sacred Heart Church and they had pictures taken, you know, in the park. So this tree is going to be in celebration of this, you know, fifty years married or however many. But we kind of are running out of space, so that would be a great idea, Joe, to have a walkway. And, you know, it's a community.
We're going to develop all of these ideas and, and, you know, as I said, we're in the beginning phases of this. We didn't even acquire the property yet, but it's good to start planning it for, for, for the future. Any other questions?
So Sandy, I was going to ask a question. I'm not sure if you're really the person to ask, but I'm just going to throw this out there since you mentioned about the grants that are available in relation to trees along the river. I know that the village has had some issues with Memorial Drive, you know, past Utopian, where we had to close the road, in fact, in one direction, whatnot. So I'm wondering if trees there could help shore things up with regards to the shore of, of the river there? Or whether that's something to look into with regards to grants?
It's a great question and a good point. And we're not going to work without landscape architects, without people that really give us advice. I know years ago, we did some planting on Arbor Day and we do up by the Brooklands Park. And, you know, we, we get the trees, we'd have the Boy Scouts out there and the trees never lived. So I think that we've kind of really structured this more that we're not going to do anything, especially trees today with the climate, the storms we have and whatnot. We do have to be very careful. But that's, that's, yeah, and we need all of your, you know, your, your input. You're going to be directing it, you know, the board. And then we're going to do all the work as much as we can. We want it done right.
Sounds good. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Next up is Mr. Fred Rela, our grant writer.
Hello.
Hello, Fred.
That was an interesting conversation. So anyway, I only have a couple items to talk about tonight about grants. But before I begin, I'm familiar with, you know, those things you talked about, Trees for Tribes with other municipalities. I've engaged them in the, in those type of programs. So I can, you know, have discussions with Sandy and whoever about that.
Great, great. That'll be great.
I just want to bring up the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Once again, that's continuing. Last month, you approved an invoice of eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars to be paid to Covino and Sons, who are the construction company performing the work over there. And Mike Janito and his finance team have given me the documentation such that I can now submit that for reimbursement. So, because it is a reimbursement grant, so I have eighty-five thousands out there and to get it back quickly is, is key and instrumental. So I'll be getting that paperwork in very shortly. I also just want to mention that there's the Assistance to Firefighter Grant, which is due February 12th. The Fire Department's really taking the lead on this. They're doing a good job. I'm working with a couple other municipalities on it. I've, I've attended seminars with FEMA and recently one sponsored by Congressman Gottheimer in New Jersey. And Cory Booker's going to be giving one on this Thursday. I made Jeremy aware of that. And we're talking and trying to get together such that I, we can put together and I can assist him in getting the best application possible for the Fire Department in, in February.
Great. All right. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Fred.
Phenomenal job as always.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Kathy Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board and everybody else. So a few things that we have on the agenda this evening. The Constant Contact emails have been going out, very, very good response to them. We've been getting some great feedback from residents. A lot more people are signing up. So it's been a, it's been a great Constant Contact program. It's going great. Nancy has been working on that, getting a lot of feedback from different people. Joe, we were so happy to see your recipe in there this week. So thank you for, for participating and it's always nice to see.
I think after this week, we're going to have to do a warmer one.
The Facebook updates, we have Facebook, we're putting the updates up regularly and information about upcoming events and information from the county and all different things up on Facebook. So we're keeping that going. We have chair exercise on Mondays and Wednesdays at 10:00 AM. Currently, we're doing those by Zoom. We have chair yoga on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Friday. Currently, we're doing those on Zoom as well. We have a kids' activity that was just put out to the schools and we're going to put it out on Facebook tomorrow. There, we're going to have a President's Day art project and we were able to get some canvases the other day for a very good price. So we're able to give those out as part of our project and parents have been reaching out to us. Kids are going to draw a, draw or paint or write about President Washington, President Lincoln and do a nice art project for us. So that's one of those that they don't have to come into the center. If it's come into any of our facilities, they're going to be doing it from home. And then they're going to take a photo and we'll be able to show those off. So we're always excited to get involved with kids' activities and that's going to be a good one. We have, Mayor, we were talking the other day about the Girl Scouts. I see Stacy's on here this evening. So we're looking forward to working with the Girl Scouts on an upcoming project in the village. We have Valentines for Veterans. So for you, for those of you that have been sending mail, sending Valentines to our mailbox over at the gazebo, we so greatly appreciate it. I picked a bunch up this morning. It's been going very well. The American Legion will be getting them to veterans. So for those of you that still haven't and would like to, there's a mailbox over at the gazebo and you can drop off a card, a drawing, something for a veteran that will make them happier for Valentine's Day. So thrilled that that's going so well. So thank you, residents, for getting all those Valentines out for our veterans.
Thank you so much for that.
Yes, exactly. I agree.
So important.
It really is. It's been wonderful. We have, one of our thoughts, I know that the next discussion is going to be about going back to the center. But we noticed when people have been going on Zoom for our classes, it's a struggle learning Zoom. Those people that haven't done it before. So one of our, one of our goals is to try to teach seniors Zoom. So that's one of our things coming up. We're going to try to do that in groups and try to figure out how we can get more people to learn Zoom for any classes or any projects that we have coming up. So that's one of our, our goals coming up this year. I was thrilled to hear about the open space and recreation information for Lonergan. I think that's going to be a great project for us to be involved with. We have been talking about community gardens and things like that. So that's, we're really looking forward to being a part of that as we go forward. So that's, that's great news to hear about that tonight. And then I know that the next topic for us will be about the community center.
The community center, as you know, was designated the vaccination site a few months ago. In anticipation of that, we had closed the community center. And we prepared the community center with a deep cleaning, a waxing, painting and organizing, which came out great so far. So thank you very much. But we are now prepared, since the county did not notify us as being, needing us to be used as a vaccination site, we might as well go ahead and reinstitute our programs back to what we had back in two weeks ago, three weeks ago and manage it exactly the same way, Kathy.
One, yay, I get big claps for that one. And I have to commend Elaine has been doing a fantastic job getting the setter ready and cleaned and ready. And the seniors, when we do get back down, down the line, they're going to be thrilled at how good it looks over there. I want to thank DPW for doing the floors. The floors are looking phenomenal over there. So it's coming together. You know, this two weeks has been down and out for the center, but it's going to come back stronger. It's going to be looking, it's, looks fantastic. So we are thrilled for the downtime that we had and more than thrilled that we're going back.
Yeah, the floors came out fabulous. It's a, you have to wear sunglasses when you go in. So the guys that did the floor, thank you. They did a great job. They really did.
They did, very much.
Just to clarify what you were saying about the vaccinations. So the county, they originally implied that, that that space would be used and now they're saying it definitely won't or just won't?
No, they, right. So it was designated a vaccination site, but it's like we're not going to be called upon to be used as a vaccination site.
Period.
Thank you.
Not even a month. I, I can't say period. I just don't, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't seem like that's going to happen.
Right now, the vaccination process has been a very slow rollout, but things could speed up down the road. We don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. And if they do, we'll, we'll, we'll change. We'll adapt to that, actually.
Perfect. I just wanted to understand that a little better. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And I just realized I didn't mention, so I sent every, I sent Amy and then I think the, the board has it. The Village of Suffering 2021 events, we are looking to go back to, you know, events and programs and things socially distant. You know, we keep hearing great things about the, the numbers going down, thank goodness, and being able to get back to some normalcy. So I sent you the list of events. Those are all, some of the, some of the weekends might switch a little bit, but overall, those are the, the timings. So if you have any comments or questions or anything on those, I won't go over all of them because in case they change. But if you have any questions on them, I'd be happy to, happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Sorry, just ask a quick question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just ask a quick question about that. I looked at the list. One of my favorite events each year are the street fairs. And I noticed that it looks like they're back on, which almost surprised me. So is it anticipating that the numbers continue to go way down or is that really just a holding spot and it may not happen?
I'm glad you did bring that one up, Steve, because I talked to, I don't know if you all know that Martina is the new president of the Suffering Chamber. She took over for Ori. So I talked to her over the weekend and they are going to ask for permission on Monday, the board meeting a week from today, to use the, to, to ask permission to have the Chamber Street Fair. So that will be coming as a question for you on Monday. So that, I'm glad you did mention that because that was one that I wanted to specify that the Chamber is going to ask for permission for that. So that's up to the board to, to decide.
And the, the art in the park, is that going to be similar to last year's while we had the, what did we call it? The Art Walk?
We called it Art and Dine. The Art and Dine Walk, I think.
So it's going to be similar to that.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to look to do the same thing. It was fantastic for the village. People came out to eat. People socially distanced, the, you know, the RSVP that Amy helped worked with us with that, trying to get people to RSVP and stagger people into the village. It seemed to work very, very well.
Right, with the regi, with the registration processes in place and all of the other COVID, you know, precautionary measures that we need to take, but, but time will tell and see, you know, what direction we're going.
Exactly.
Prelimarily, you know, it looks good.
Yes. And that is it for me.
Yeah, and just to, just to speak about the Valentines for, for vets, you know, the homebound veterans during, during COVID and the, and the veterans that are in nursing homes right here in the Willows and veterans that are overseas or wherever we're going to ship out our Valentine's Day will just bring, bring a smile to each and every veteran that receives one. So thank you and thank the American Legion once again for doing that.
Yes, very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Police Department Chief Lachlan.
Evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. I just wanted to give everyone an update for the month of January so far. As of today's date, we've responded to a little over 500 calls for service. We've made multiple arrests, including charging individuals, individuals with menacing burglary, criminal contempt first, criminal mischief, criminal possession of a weapon, assault, menacing in the second degree with a weapon, unlawful possession of marijuana and several vehicle and traffic related arrests. We also made an arrest of a subject who was a fugitive from justice. He was wanted for robbery in the state of New Jersey. I wanted to update the board on one particular arrest that we made while responding to a domestic violence incident because I feel that the responding officers acted in a professional and exemplary manner in bringing the incident under control without injuries to any of the parties involved. On January 13th, at approximately 3:30 AM, we received a call from a female resident stating that she was involved in a domestic dispute with her boyfriend and that she had locked herself inside of her bedroom because she was in fear for her safety. She further advised us that her boyfriend was in the process of attempting to stab through the bedroom door with two large knives, as well as kick and break the door down in an attempt to get to her. Police officers Ventarini and Michael Kerswell responded to the residence and were able to place the male into custody without incident. They were also able to gather evidence, including the knives that were being used to stab the door, photographic evidence of the crime scene, including damage that was done. All of that will be invaluable to the prosecution of this individual. This incident could have very easily turned into a deadly force encounter, but the quick response and professionalism of the officers involved resulted in an arrest being made without force being used and the removal of the offender from the scene, ultimately protecting the victim in this case. I wanted to be sure that the officers, officers were recognized for their restraint and professional response to this incident. The last, the last item I wanted to update the board about was in regards to a traffic enforcement study and selective enforcement detail that we conducted. The study was initiated by request from Mayor Markunis after receiving a complaint from residents of Wayne Avenue, vehicles speeding in the posted 35 mile an hour zone. Between January 18th and January 22nd, we conducted several speed enforcement details at this location. The speed of 663 vehicles were measured during this detail. The average speed for vehicles measured was 34.73 miles an hour with the high speed captured at 55 miles an hour. Again, the posted speed limit for this area is 35 miles an hour. During this detail, we issued four speeding summonses as well as several other summonses for various other vehicle and traffic infractions during the detail. We're going to continue to periodically enforce speed-related violations in this area. That's all I have for my update. A few discussion points that I wanted to go over with the board that they may choose to take action on at the next meeting. We'll be asking for the board to appoint Matthew Imperial as a part-time police officer. As you remember, he was nominated at a prior board meeting and he has since been cleared by the Department of Personnel for employment. We'll also be asking the board to appoint Julio Varas as full-time police officer. Again, he was nominated at a previous board meeting and has since been cleared by the Department of Personnel for employment. Unfortunately, we'll also be asking the board to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Senior Detective Craig Long, effective on January 22nd. Craig was with the Suffering Police Department for 40 years. He was one of our most well-liked and respected members of the department and he's going to be sorely missed by all of us. Having said that, we all want to wish him health and happiness in his retirement. I also wanted to discuss with the board, it came up a bit at the last board meeting about possibly doing some police station renovations. I had sent the board an email outlining the need for some upgrades to the police department and funding that would be used for that. As you know, we did an evidence. and funding that would be used for that. As you know, we did an evidence purge where we auctioned off numerous items that were surplus items, items that we couldn't find an owner for, so on and so forth. It resulted in $60,237 coming back to the village as revenue. So we'll be, you know, asking the board for permission to use that funding or some of that funding for police station renovations. And that's all that I have.
Andrew, I'd like to say to you, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right, Chief Lachlan. I'd like to say to you, thanks to that wonderful tour you gave me of the police station. And he really gave me an hour or an hour and a half of slow, patient education of the whole police station. Every corner of it practically except the evidence room. I wanted to get in there, but even he couldn't open it up. And that tour of the police station convinced me of two things. One, that you you do need a lot of repairs there and new desks and all that. And number two, you did, I really learned that you did go through the work of selling, which took a lot of work, I learned, selling all that ammunition and getting that money. And I hope when it comes up before the board that we all say definitely, you know, that's your money to use to improve your station.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. And I just also would like to recognize Officer Ventorini and Officer Coswell on that great job. And, you know, and an apprehension without even using any type of force and and, you know, protecting out our residents here at 3:30 in the morning. So thank you very much. Great job. The Wayne Avenue and the speed enforcement, another another issue that, you know, is going is has been addressed. Our residents did, you know, call up and and complained to say, you know, that the speed was excessive, but upon 663 cars that were monitored at an average rate of 34.3 miles per hour, you know, I mean, just the enforcement alone being out there and and monitoring it and issuing some summonses. So thank you for that. And Craig Long, the senior detective of 40 years on the job. That's phenomenal. I give him a round of applause because that is that that is something. Thank you, Mr. Long. Thank you for your service to this community. And I'm sure that we'll be working together again.
I'm sure we'll see him again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, Chief. Did you miss item 6F about Mr. Berry? Or did I miss that? 7F, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not exactly sure what um that I believe that's just um that's
Housekeeping.
Yeah, it's just a technicality as far as you could probably explain it better, Mayor.
Yeah, that's that's just the housekeeping on the eligibility list that will be updated from a different number. That's all it is. Okay. All right, Chief. Does anyone have anything else for the chief?
I had a quick question for the chief. I know that last, I believe it was last June, we spoke about, or maybe that's actually, excuse me, it was last June, a letter was written about speeding or whatever on Washington Avenue. And then a study was conducted, a similar thing as you recently did on Wayne Avenue, and you determined that wasn't the case, which is great news that that is not a problem there that the residents believe. But I know there was a number of signatories on that letter. There was at least 15 residents that wrote the letter. And I know we discussed it at the time. I just want to make sure or follow up that they were notified that in fact there was
So I followed up with, I believe it was the village clerk's office that received the letter. Does the petition or letter, whatever we're speaking about, there were no what I saw, there was no signatures on that. There was one resident that had written that petition. But I didn't see anything with with multiple signatories. I did reach out. I did reach out and contact the person that sent the letter and explained our findings to her. But I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of other signatories.
Okay, I received a copy of the letter, and I could certainly forward it to you. It was by, you know, by snail mail. But I did receive a copy of the letter, and that's, you know, I, you know, escalated it as need be, and the work got done, which is great. But there were at least 15 people with their name and address. They were handwritten. So I didn't necessarily recognize, you know, all the signatures. It was some, some of them were harder to read, but the addresses were there. So we could certainly cross
If you wanted to forward that to me, I'd be happy to to reach out to them all and let them know of the outcome of the study.
That'd be great. I will. I will locate the letter. I definitely have a have a scan that I made, and I will forward it to you, Chief. Thank you very much. Thank you for your good work. I really appreciate it.
Problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chief, while you're on, you know, I know that we previously discussed the upgrades to the Suffolk Police Station and the use of funds. How is the board going to feel? Does the board have any questions or concerns in regards to utilizing those funds that we received from the auction to use for the upgrades to the police station?
Well, is it going to be all 60,000 or just some of it?
Well, I could tell you, we've we've began getting quotes from different contractors. We definitely need new flooring. Most of the quotes we've gotten for that were in the $20,000 range. All of the furniture that we have is from either the 1980s or 1990s. And that furniture was never purchased by the village. That furniture was actually donated to us by Avon and Novartis and companies like that, that when they were actually surplusing that that equipment, they donated to us. So when we got that equipment in the 80s and 90s, it was already used equipment. So you can imagine, you know, it's being used 24 hours a day, seven, seven days a week here. It's it's in disrepair. We've reached out to some furniture companies on state contract. We're waiting on some numbers, but, you know, ballpark, they're saying we're in between 25 to $40,000 for furniture. So, I mean, just the floors and the furniture alone is probably going to go through that $60,000.
Okay, just a question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just on my, on what I've seen in the police station, I'm usually down there daily that it that it's definitely in in dire need of upgrade.
It was 10 years ago. I understand that. I was asking, Chief.
I know. I'm voicing my concern for the police department and the condition of their equipment that they have in the police department and expressing my concern to the board that they are in need of upgrades to the furniture, flooring, painting, walls, and everything else. They need to have accommodations as everyone else does.
Correct. They needed it 20 years ago. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on now. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, I don't think Mr. Zawiki is with us. Is he on? I don't believe so.
I don't see him listed, Mayor.
Okay, so Mr. Zawiki is he's out. And his discussion was going to be the authorization to solicit bids for the water department. This is an annual process. You have it in front of you. Along with the municipal snow and ice agreement, and then application for payment number two to Covino, Covino and Sons for the Wayne Avenue sidewalk project. All right.
Mayor, how much was that payment number two, the dollar amount?
We don't. I don't have the exact payment amount for the for number two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Next up, Mr. Janito, Village Treasurer.
Yes, Mayor, on the agenda, item 9A, I'm going to hold off on that. I'll let the board know on that the board meeting about or before the board meeting about that. That may actually have been accrued in in the previous fiscal year. It involved a grant for monies that were spent. And we may have accrued that amount as a receivable by year end. The second item is regarding our two projects, 2018 001 and 2019 001. Essentially, these were two projects associated with the Environmental Facilities Corp financing through a long term financing bond. That's what the EFC referred to as their 2020B, like in Bravo bonds. And because of the financing costs and so forth, there were some minor adjustments that had to be made. So that resolution amending capital projects 2018 001 and 2019 001 is simply to align the budgets and to provide for the financing of the projects in accordance with the EFC financing. Yep, the next item that we have is the Village of Suffolk. Well, let me start with this. The Village of Suffolk provides fuel to the Village of Armont. They come by fuel up and we record how much they use as well as the Rockland County Solid Waste District. And basically what the two organizations do, they fill up at our station. We then record how much they used. We then bill them pretty much on a quarterly basis for the average cost of the fuel used. The Village of Hillburn has requested the same arrangement. And Charles Zawiki has advised that he has no issue with that. Rob Magrino has prepared a a resolution that would provide for an agreement between Hillburn and Suffolk, similar to what we have with Armont and the county and the Rockland County Solid Waste District. So that we're recommending that the board approve.
Right.
And then the final item here.
Approached by the mayor of Hillburn to enter into that agreement to see if he could find any savings. So that that took place a while ago. I'm glad to see that's happening. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and that actually goes in the spirit of intermunicipal agreements, which, as you know, is a big push on the part of the state government for our local governments to do. The final item, which is under my agenda here, is the the concept of a consent agenda, which I was asked to basically present to the board as something that the board might want to consider. What a consent agenda basically does is that right now, you're going through this workshop, spending quite a bit of time discussing various matters on the agenda. Some of these agenda items are are really items that don't have any controversy to them. And so you would all be in agreement with them generally. And you would discuss them at the workshop in any event. So what a consent agenda does is that the mayor, for instance, being the chair of the meeting, could take the agenda and take a number of items on the agenda and propose a consent agenda to say at the at the formal meeting that he proposes these items to be accepted by the board. And then it's just a vote yes or no to accept the consent agenda. And if it is, all those items then are recorded as having been adopted by the board in the minutes. And what it does leave you for is the more important things that the board would really want to spend some time with the public discussing at the formal board meeting. And our consent agenda can be presented by the mayor. And any board member could decide at that point in time that they would prefer to have a more full, complete discussion and ask that it be pulled away from the consent agenda. And then all the other items could be voted on. So it's not something that's fixed in stone that everybody has to agree with. It just will take sometimes some what could be a very long meeting and shorten it up quite a bit. And yet still have that full discussion at the workshop as you've had. So it's out there for the public to hear. And it's at the same time, it would be in the minutes that what was adopted. So in essence, that's what a consent agenda is. And I did send the board a bit of information on it. One of the people or governments I used to work for, the city of White Plains, uses it extensively. Of course, they have some very long agendas. If you take a look at their website and their meetings, they can run good enough amount of time, and they'll have sometimes 80 or to 100 items on the agenda. So just something for consideration of the board that might, the great thing about it is this, it basically allows the board to focus on those items and allow more public participation time during a regular meeting.
Sounds good.
And and that's it for my office.
I have a question, Mike, in terms of the fuel purchases.
Oh, yes.
If is if we sign up Hillburn, as you mentioned, we already have Armont on board doing this. Does the fact that we'd be purchasing more fuel in any way assist us with getting a better price on the fuel that we're then selling?
No, it wouldn't, because we buy our fuel under the state contract pricing. And so that's obviously it's it's without taxes, and it's at a bulk rate that the state has negotiated.
I see. Okay, and and we're basically turning it around and and charging, let's say, you know, Armont right now, and then Hillburn in the future, exactly what we pay then? Or like, what's the what's the benefit for the extra work that that we are putting into that, obviously, because we have to deal with that billing and everything else, you know?
Well, the only benefit to the village is the spirit of intermunicipal cooperation, and it's it's more like a benefit for all residents of the state of New York.
Sure. Okay, I get it. I just wanted to kind of ask if there's some benefit, you know, direct benefit as opposed to holistic benefit.
All right, great. Thank you, Mr. Janito.
Thank you.
Now we have Mr. Magrino.
Good evening, everyone. Just piggybacking on to what Michael was discussing regarding the consent agendas. If you do go to that, obviously, it would be a separate a little different format than what you're what you see now in order to do it. And I'm just looking at, for example, those items and under the police department. Those would be separate and along with the other items that would be on the consent agenda. So it would be a little bit of a different format. So we would, we would have to talk about that a little more, but I just wanted to to put that in there. This is an underlisted, but the Lonergan Drive came up. I am in touch with the attorneys for the state as well as the county of Rockland, because there are some outstanding property taxes there. So we want to make sure that issue is cleared up before we take title to the property. So those we are we had anticipated taking title sooner, but we're working on those tax issues now as we speak. The only other thing that I had on for next week is the public hearing on the changes to Chapter 254. I worked with Amy Pafferoff on that. She did a nice job in putting it all together. I made some changes. I finally had a chance to sit down and and take a good look at it. So I made some changes, which I believe you saw, and we can discuss next week at the meeting. Just it not really substantive, but more formats make it a little easier to kind of to follow. So that's all I have for next week. And unless anybody has anything else, the next item was Mr. Glick will put on, and I'll defer to him on that one.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
This is something that we've discussed a few months ago. Under the existing chapter of village code, the Board of Trustees is the body that hears foil appeals. What this recommended change would do is add in Section 213.7, after the word Board of Trustees, or its designate to hear appeals. Then by resolution, the board could resolve to have the village attorney serve as the person that would handle foil appeals. Now, foil appeals are relatively rare. Basically, they would crop up in those instances where a requister has been denied based on one of the exceptions to disclosure that exists under the Freedom of Information Law. And then they have the right to appeal that denial. In those instances where most often the requister is not receiving the documents that they sought access to, it's because they don't exist. And the village clerk, after looking, can't find them. And therefore, it's not a denial, just an answer that the records to which access is sought do not exist. But in those rare instances where there is a denial based upon one of the legalities, if you will, of the Freedom of Information Law, then the appeal, as the code currently exists, is to be determined by the Board of Trustees. And that in best experience, becomes a little bit cumbersome and logistically difficult because there are time constraints built into that process by virtue of the existing state law. So these things are to be handled relatively expeditiously and by and large, the question to be answered on an appeal is a legal one. So that's the recommended change, if you will. So that's the recommended change, if you will, to Village Code, section 213.7. Questions?
Richard, in a sentence, what exactly is the change?
I'll read it to you. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk shall hear appeals for denial of access to records. So for example, in the subdivision A, it would now read, "The Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk or its designate shall hear appeals for denial of access." And then there are two other sentences where the same or its designate would be added. And that basically is the change. And then what the board would do by resolution is designate who that individual would be. And most commonly, it'd be the village attorney.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, so how does the board feel about that to set a public hearing for the March 1st meeting?
Sounds fine.
Okay. All right. So we'll present that on Monday. We'll have a resolution prepared to have the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Glickel.
You're welcome.
Okay, trustees.
I just have, I just have one thing that I'd like to bring up. I know on December 3rd, JCO had sent us a renegotiated beginning of a idea of a contract for less money. And I think it's a great beginning point. And I'd like to know what's going on with that and what's happening.
Okay, so they did send the proposal. Yes, December 3rd. Okay. I sent it up to Mr. Zawicki and Mr. Stemmel and Mr. Flores on the 10th, and we need to have a discussion about it and work through the revisions.
Okay, I'd like to be a part of that conversation.
Okay.
Because now they've offered $8,000, which is a great starting point. Don't get me wrong. And so I think from December 3rd to now, it's it's kind of time to work through that.
Okay.
And would it also be possible to consider if they offer this in December, and it's going to be February soon, backdating the agreement and get some retro money back?
I don't know about that one, but we could try that.
Well, I think that we need, there's a lot more questions that need to be answered than just, you know, December 3rd till now. So there's, you know, if the board has any questions, I highly suggest you put them and send them in an email to everybody, you know. I'd like to see if there's actually an opportunity to capture more money than just $8,000.
I have a few questions. Number one, this email that you were describing for, you know, where they're renegotiating. I don't believe I saw that email. Was that something forwarded to the board?
No, we didn't have the discussion at this time yet. We're going to discuss it with Mr. Zawicki and Mr. Flores. I know Mr. Flores did express the concern of the reduction in manpower and the operators during this time. This is a critical time in the upgrade process. So that's the issues that I wanted to explore with Mr. Zawicki and Mr. Flores. And now Jill wants to be part of it, so.
I would also like.
I've always been part of the sewer plant, so I've been doing the meetings that we've had, so.
I would also like to take into account and or compare the costs that we are spending or would be spending with the reduction that you're proposing for JCO in comparison to hiring a foray that is qualified to run the plan.
I think I have, I think I have that analysis.
Okay, because I would like to see that analysis.
Okay, let me write that down.
Okay. And and on that same note, you know, you know, I know there's proposals, you know, nothing's, nothing's been formalized yet or voted on. But, you know, we're proposing, I believe, a $9 million upgrade to the sewer system. I would like a cost benefit analysis done to compare having village residents shoulder a $9 million cost in comparison to possibly considering not doing our own sewage and hiring, you know, leasing or whatever the case may be, services from another, you know, whether it's whether it's another company or another municipality or whatever to do that, to do that work rather than completely renovating our our existing infrastructure. I'm not saying we should go that route. I'm saying it would be good to know how the $9 million compares against that in terms of the cost to village residents. Again, I'm not suggesting that's the right way to go. I'm merely suggesting I'd like to see a cost benefit analysis of that. That's all.
So Steve, you mean compare it to pumping it to the sewer district?
For instance, and again, that may be far more expensive, but I'd like to at least know that, you know, just as a, you know, because obviously there, if we do go ahead with the $9 million cost minus any grants, minus any grants that we can get, you know, so there's a net cost to village residents that would have to be bonded, which would by nature increase their taxes X amount of dollars, or not really necessarily the taxes, but their their water bills, whatever the case may be, their sewer bills. So, you know, there's a cost. The bottom line is there's a cost that would be shouldered by residents. We know that. But I would like to compare that cost to the inevitable difference in cost. It would cost more, obviously, if we sent our sewage somewhere else, but I'd like to know how different.
And let's see, let's see if we can have Delaware Engineering take a look at that and give it and guide us in that regard.
Sure. And again, I mean, it's probably the best plan, you know, to fix ours. I just want to know. I don't have any information, so I just want to be able to compare. Thank you.
We'll try.
And years, because you have to build the whole, all that piping, so.
Right.
Mayor, there was a sewer consolidation study done. You could probably ask Rob for.
Right. So that's what I'm going to, I'm going to seek out, you know. Kyle, if you can make note of that also, and then talk to me in the morning. We'll speak about it and then we'll get on with Delaware.
Of course.
Thank you.
Oh, Kyle, Kyle, while you're on the line, if I may, do you guys still want to have that meeting on Thursdays at 10 o'clock, even though Charles is out for a bit?
Yeah, so I actually talked to Danielle today. I said, I asked her if she would be willing if I called her at 10 o'clock to take down some minutes. I thought it would be good. It's been a good driving force in keeping everyone on track and then keeping you, you know, informed. So, yes, I'd like to do that very much. I can call you, or I don't know how you'd want to handle that.
Yeah, that's just fine. That's perfect. I can give you my cell phone number.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that on an email, I guess. You don't need to do it here, right?
It doesn't matter. Everybody has it anyway.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question about, Michael Janito explained to me that years ago, the county of Rockland actually offered to buy the sewer plant from us, and we turned it down.
That was in the 80s. In the 80s, you had three options. Completely renovate that plant as it stood, do what was done, which is the plant you have now, or try to to move over to Rockland. Yeah, the decision was made to do this plant at that time.
Yeah. Well, I'm just wondering, is any chance that we could have that opportunity to consider selling the sewer treatment plant?
I think the, I believe that's why they built their new plant over there in Hillburn, if I'm not mistaken. Because they did need that. That was their option. That's what they went with instead of purchasing this one, purchasing this one, if I'm not mistaken. I don't want to misspeak, but I believe that's what happened.
All right, so it's pretty much off the table.
I think so. Like I said, there was a Rockland County sewer consolidation study that was done this past year. I have not seen it. I know that we submitted a lot of data to them from, you know, Suffolk. And it's basically flows what it sees and everything. That at that time, it looked like connecting Suffolk wasn't a feasible option. But I did not see that myself, so I couldn't speak to that. But that actually was also done by Delaware Engineering. So they they have all that data.
I also have a question for Richard Glickle, if he's still with us. And my question would be, when will the negotiations begin on the police contract? Because I would like to be, you know, with Richard when that happens and report back to the board. But so far, I haven't heard a word about the police contract negotiations. Do you know, Mayor, when when they might begin?
We're going to be charged with reviewing the police contract. And I know Richard has been working on that and myself, I've been reviewing it. Did you receive a copy of the contract?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so you need a copy of the police contract.
We are there, yes.
Mr. Glickel, can you provide the board with the most recent contract and MOA?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I will send that out. I have it scanned. It's already on my computer, so I'll broadcast it to everybody tomorrow.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And I know that you've been reviewing it.
Yes.
When do you think that you will begin with negotiations?
We haven't heard anything, we haven't heard anything from the union as far as negotiation or there's been, I think the term is crickets. Maybe we can reach out to them and see if they have anything in mind.
Okay.
I just wanted to also add, because I wasn't quite done before, is I was talking to Sandy Stead, the chair of the tree department, and I understand that Charles was unable to make the last meeting. And we all received on the board an email, you know, I have a good idea why. But I think it would be good if Charles in the future could communicate as well with Sandy, you know, if he's not going to be able to make it to a meeting, because apparently he did not do that. And also, if perhaps in his absence, if Danielle Curtin could have possibly been able to attend, that would have been probably helpful to Sandy. I know that Sandy had mentioned something to me about that, and she didn't discuss it, but I figured I'd bring it up.
Okay. Okay, next. Tomorrow, I'll be discussing and interviewing Mr. Adam Gordon along with Mr. Steve Conley for the open position for fire inspector. That was postponed from, I guess, a few weeks ago, at least due to COVID. And next is the New York State Public Employees Health Emergency Plan for the Village of Suffolk, very similar to our reopening plan that we put a lot of work into with the input from department heads, union officials, the board, the attorneys. So now there's another mandate that's dictated by the state to have another health emergency plan in place. So we're working on that. That went out to the union officials and to the board and the attorneys. So we're working through that. And then the discussion on the comprehensive plan for the Village of Suffolk, I know that has been thrown around a few times. I don't know what the board, how the board feels about that. A full comprehensive plan of the entire village will be roughly around $100,000?
Who's the, who's doing it?
No one's doing it yet.
Right, but who are you looking at? And we should all see the different.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to see what does the board feel? Do you feel the need to go out for solicit bids for a full comprehensive plan of the village? Do you want to do a comprehensive plan of the GB and the CB? That's the General Business District and the Central Business District for you, for those that don't know. You know, it's open for discussion. How would you like to proceed?
I do have a question. I believe you, Mayor, distributed something to the board about roughly two weeks ago that described some items that were already looked at by an outside agency, not agency, a company.
Lang and Associates, maybe.
I think so. I don't have it in front of me. I don't remember the vendor. But it was very comprehensive in terms of what it, you know, the kind of granular, you know, how it described a lot of things, but it looked like it was from many years ago, you know. So obviously, you know, updating it would obviously be relevant. But it seems like a lot of the legwork was done, and I don't think very many things, if any, were acted upon from when that was last done. So I guess the question would be, I certainly wouldn't want to spend money and then not have anything done. So I, you know, I would want to know, you know, if we were going to spend money that we actually, you know, earmark sort of a plan, you know, like to actually attack the issues that are brought up. And also the fact that there is this additional document that has a lot of good suggestions, I thought. It was quite comprehensive. Maybe, maybe it makes more sense to act on some of those things first and then get an update and see where we stand.
Yeah, if I could weigh in, Steve, I know I've been discussing this with the mayor and Charles and actually really everybody on the board a little bit. I think that report that you're talking about from John Lang was just that. It was a report. It wasn't so much a, an action plan. I can tell you that just in Orange Town in the last month, we put out a, an RFP for planners to, you know, do a comprehensive plan for the town. I think in Orange Town, the last one was 2003, 2004. In Suffolk, I, you know, my opinion is, and I know it's an expense, but Suffolk could use a comprehensive plan because frankly, you know, the, it really has been, it seems to have been piecemeal since the last time a comprehensive plan was done. You know, I challenge anybody to even be able to find the last one that was.
I was just going to say, when was the last one, so?
With, given everything that's happened, particularly with, you know, now you have the Sheldon, we have all these other larger projects coming in. You had that project that the board seemed interested in earlier this evening. You had one of which also begs a question, because I know somebody is interested in in coming in for a zone change for downtown Suffolk for allowing, you know, residences above existing businesses. So my opinion is that, you know, the mayor mentioned the CB and just the GB, you can do that. I don't know how much more it would cost. I can tell you it's public knowledge that the bids that Orange Town got were, I think, the low, the highest was around 300, and I believe the lowest was around 125. So, you know, I mean, these are, that gives you an idea. Most were in the 100 range, the 300 was a bit of an anomaly. But but what they include are, is, you know, public outreach, public hearings, workshops, you know, and and proposals, and they come up with an actual plan. I think in reading John Lang's, again, report, it was just that, I think, a report. And okay, you know, these are some good ideas, and certainly whether it's John or somebody else can use that going forward. But, you know, my recommendation, especially with all that's going on in the village, if it can be done financially is to, is to do a new comprehensive plan. And again, you know, it is professional service, so you don't necessarily have to do an RFP. It's helpful to do an RFP because you, you know, get a number of different bidders or proposals, if you will, and you can choose and interview, et cetera, as you see fit. But, you know, it's certainly worth talking about.
I'd like to ask a question to our treasurer, Michael Janito, about that. Anywhere from $125,000 to $300,000. Michael, how does that sound as a budget expense when you hear that range of numbers? Is that a lot of money? Is that a heavy duty expense? Is it nothing?
Well, it's certainly a lot of money. Depends on how rich you are, I guess. But it's, it's definitely enough money to be concerned about in the sense that you're not going to put it into a one-year budget. You'd typically finance that amount with a bond anticipation note, which you would pay off within a five-year period. So if you had $100,000, it'd be, you would expect to have a budget increase of $20,000 a year for five years, plus whatever the interest would be on that.
I see.
Of course, each place is different. Orange Town's RFP was unique to there, so. Of course, each place is different. Orange Town's RFP was unique to, to there, so.
And Orange Town is a much larger square, whether that makes a difference or not, I'm not quite sure. But it's, it's a larger organization, and we, we are two square miles. I'm not quite sure how much Orange Town is.
Sounds a lot larger.
It's a lot larger. It's got commercial, a lot more commercial industrial space in it and, and, and other things to consider. But in any event, normally if something is, is more than about $50,000, we wouldn't want to put it into the budget, and we would typically take a note out to pay it off over a five-year period.
Well, let me ask you, let's just say it was a $20,000 additional expense for five years. How much, what percentage would it raise taxes if it was a $20,000 yearly additional expense?
If I recall correctly, just on average, and everything would change, of course, with, with every year going forward, but I think it's about for every $120,000, it's a percent increase. I think that's what we had in the last budget. So it might be, you know, 0.2, you know, percent increase in the budget or something like that.
What percent did you say, Mike?
Like 0.2%.
Yeah, that's what I was just figuring.
The tax rate, but you got to remember something, trustee, is that that tax rate is always dependent upon the new year coming up. So your assessed valuation versus whatever your expenditures are and your other revenues that would come in, and how they offset it. So your tax rate and your tax levy is based on the fact that whatever your expenditures are, and then you subtract from that whatever you can get in other types of revenues to offset those in, those expenditures. What's left is what you have to raise in taxes. And then the taxes themselves, the levy is divided by the assessed valuation. So if the assessed valuation goes up, the burden of the tax is spread across more people, and it's not as significant as it would be if you had a lower assessed value. So anyhow, we can get more into that, but basically, you know, as a rule of thumb, I would say a $20,000 a year would, would be about a 0.2% increase in the tax rate as we have had it currently.
All right, thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
I think this is a good idea, and I would like us to move forward with this RFP.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it into the new budget year? Would that be recommended, Michael, or would it?
Well, I don't think it would make a difference because we would put it into a capital project. So what we would do is, you know, it, once we get a number, we would authorize the amount and, and get a bond, a bond resolution to, to finance it.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. How, how's the rest of the board feel about that?
If it can be good, if it can be bought cheap enough, like at 125,000, I would like it.
And maybe I, I just sent a message to the other board members as well as the mayor. I just looked up, Orange Town is 31.3 square, 31.33 square miles. So it's, this is a much smaller village at, at two square miles, just to kind of-
Maybe ours will-
2.4, 2.4 square miles.
I was, I was approximating.
2.2.
By the, by the way, while I'm thinking or while I'm speaking, I forwarded to the board and, and to the police chief that letter from the Washington Avenue residents that has the signatures on the bottom with the addresses of, of the people that signed on. So hopefully, we can send notes to those people just to acknowledge that a, a study was done. That'd be great.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, okay, like make a motion to go enter into an executive session for a discussion of personnel matters.
Motion.
Motion, trustee Barone.
Second, trustee Corrigan.
Trustee Corrigan.
I will need a couple of seconds.
Everyone, remember to mute. I need a couple of seconds also.
Yeah, all, all in favor, I guess you should say, but aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
All in favor, aye. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, let's make a motion first to exit the executive session.
All right. Trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, okay. Do I have a second?
Trustee Salveman.
And trustee Salveman. And then, so that's 10-10. And next motion to-
We should make it all in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion to adjourn.
I make such a motion. Trustee Salveman.
Salveman, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, everyone, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
They say-